So it is 7 o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting to order for the Board of Selectmen meeting agenda for April 20th. This is a special meeting via Zoom at 7:00 PM. We're going to call this meeting to order and if I can do this properly, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all. All right, and this is roll call at this point.
Art Cagney.
Kathy Tendrich.
Kevin Cunningham.
Becky Hewitt.
Item C is to approve the minutes, not minute, minutes from March 9th, 2020. So everybody had a chance to read through.
I have, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from March 9th, 2020.
Second.
Kathy and Art, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Just wanted some clarifications here. I guess we'll get that once in a while. All right, so just so everybody understands, this is something new for us. We're just going to walk through it step by step. And one of the things I was asked to share with people, of course, this is a totally web-based call. So we're operating under the following procedures. And if I can do this properly. Well, maybe not. The difficulty about this is trying to run a meeting on Zoom and to do other things, especially from this position. So it's going to be a little difficult. I ask you to bear with us. Obviously, this is being audio recorded. And we are also recording this for the video for our proceedings. And to ensure the sound quality, the default rule for this meeting is that we're going to have everybody remain on mute. And that generally, the board members and staff will remain on mute except when speaking or voting. And generally be keeping the video of themselves if you'd like to throughout the meeting. I was trying to get this over to our town Facebook page, but I'm having difficulty with that. So we'll work on that for our next meeting. I apologize to that. Again, this is a new process for us. We'll work through all our little issues now. So that's why, what I'd like to do is for anybody that is joining us, make sure you go into mute at this point. And if I don't see you, please go into mute. If you have a comment or concern, because this is difficult to monitor and be able to run the meeting, I'm going to ask that. There is a function in here called chat. If you have a question or a comment or concern, if you would click on the chat button and you can type your message here. I may or may not be able to answer that immediately because of what we're doing, trying to monitor multiple things. But I will, I will say this, I'll copy those down and make sure I get back to the individuals after the meeting and prior to our next meeting, so we can go forward. We'll work through those issues. At this point, that was item D. So we'll go through item E, which is old business. I don't believe we have any old business at this point. Item F is new business. Item F1, consider an act on affordable housing plan grant resolution. In the selectmen package, you'll notice that there is an item in there for that, which is Mary Ann Shanti had written us a a follow-up. Is Mary Ann still on? She was here a little earlier and now.
I think, I think she's there.
There you go. Okay, hold on one second. I'll unmute her. Hello, Mary Ann.
Good evening, Kevin. How are you?
Very good. So if in our packet, we have the Affordable Housing Plan Preparation Assistance, there is an available grant for that, I believe?
Yeah, there is. Closing date of June 30th or when the money runs out.
Okay.
And we need the resolution adopted so that that can be submitted. It has to be submitted with the application.
All right. So if, if the selectmen have been able to read through the packet and understand what that is, if you have any questions, Mary Ann's right here for you.
No question.
All right, hearing no questions or comments, any concerns, entertain a motion to accept the Affordable Housing Plan Preparation Assistance to apply for the grant.
I'll make that motion.
Motion? All second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And.
Did we lose Kathy?
I think we might have lost Kathy.
We did.
Yep. All right, so I'll monitor and see if anybody's trying to come back in and I'll put her back in as soon as possible.
Naomi and Karen need to go on mute.
All right, so we have Karen. How come I can't mute that? Hmm. Mute all. Unmute, unmute. And.
Naomi left.
Yeah, I can't get Karen to mute either. Hmm, okay, we'll just continue on. Some issues have to be fixed here, but.
Kevin?
Yes?
So you still have to do the all in favor. You didn't do that part.
Yes, yep. So on item one, we had two motions by Art and I seconded.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, so we have passed that resolution. Item number two is discuss and adopt the Fair Housing Resolution. And Kathy is now coming back in. She's joining, so I'll wait for Kathy to get here. All right, Kathy, you're back, right?
She's muted.
Not anymore. Kathy, you're back, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's unfortunate parts of technology. We'd already voted on the item number one, which was to consider an act on the Affordable Housing Grant Resolution.
Yep.
All right, so we're into item number two, discuss the adoption of Fair Housing Resolution. We still have Mary Ann here.
You do.
All right, so for this, if you wouldn't mind giving a brief description, Mary Ann?
This is part of the CDBG Small Cities Requirements. Every year, you have to adopt the resolution and, you know, comply with other annual requirements like sending letters to realtors and to bankers, encouraging them to use the Fair Housing Brochures. And this resolution is one of the annual requirements.
All right. Everybody has a copy of that in their packet. There is a few whereas's through there. If you don't mind, I'll read through them quickly. This is the Fair Housing Resolution for the Town of Plainfield, whereas all persons are afforded the right to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. And whereas federal fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familiar status, or national origin, be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and home ownership opportunities, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing locations. And whereas Connecticut Fair Housing Laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, creed, color, or national origin, ancestry, sex, marital status, age, lawful source of income, family, status, learning disability, physical and mental disability, sexual orientation, or gender, identity, or expression, be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and home ownership opportunities, and may be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. Well, only a couple to go. Whereas the Town of Plainfield is committed to upholding these laws and realizes that these laws must be implemented by the affirmative statement publicly endorsing the right of all people to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Plainfield hereby endorses a fair housing policy to ensure equal opportunity for all persons to rent, purchase, obtain financing, and enjoy all other housing-related services of their choice in a non-discriminatory basis as provided by the state and federal law. And be it further resolved that the Chief Executive Officer of the Town of Plainfield of his or her designation representative is responsible for responding to and assisting any person who alleges to be the victim of an illegal discriminatory housing practice in the Town of Plainfield and for advising such persons of the right to file a complaint with the State of Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities, or the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, or to seek assistance from the Connecticut Fair Housing Center, legal services, or other fair housing organizations to protect his or her right to the equal housing opportunities. And this would be something we would vote on, so it can be adopted by the Board of Selectmen at its April 20th, 2020 meeting.
I'll make a motion that we accept this resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion to accept in a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up on the list is consider to approve the bid for the Town Highway Roof Bid. The bid, excuse me, the bid came in, as you can see in your packet. The contract base price was $188.129. We did talk to the winning bidder, which was the roofing store. If you take a look on your second page, there was a request for a change order. It's the installation value to bring it down to, from an R38 to a 21, which still is compliant with what we're looking for, for that roof. I was working with Kyle to do so, and the owner of the roofing store had no problem with bringing it down to the 175.
So I guess my first question is, how many bids did you receive for the roof?
This time only two. There were, there were a lot of people that put information in or requested information, but only two came in.
And who was the other company? Because I don't have that.
Yeah, I don't have that either. I think Kyle, Kyle has it with his packet, but I believe it was one of the other stores that had bid prior and their, their price hadn't changed. It was still 231.
That was the higher bidder then?
Correct.
So my other question to you, your change order, was that given to the other company that bid?
Kyle called them and they didn't want to do that. That's what I was told. So at this time, we do have in front of us a, a change order for 175. We do have in our budget 150, which it depends on what you want to do with this. But that would bring us up to still looking for another $25,000 to allocate for this.
I'm going to abstain from this.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept this bid at 175,000 for the roof, highway roof.
And I will second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. And one abstaining. The next item up on there is item number four, because we did push forward the 150, I'm sorry. We do have $150,000 in our budget for this. We still need to be able to appropriate another 25 to have the roofing completed. So what we're going to do is then ask for a motion that the Board of Selectmen requests consideration from the Board of Finance to approve taking $25,000 from its fund balance to cover the remaining monies needed to pay for the Town Highway Roof Project.
So I'll make a motion that we put, put this to Board of Finance, take 25,000 to add to the roof bid.
Okay, motion for 25,000 to the Board of Finance to approve remaining of the money for the roof bid.
I'll abstain from that also.
So you have a motion. I would second that motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have one abstaining. Next item up on the agenda is item number five. This is an item where the executive orders have been coming in from the State of Connecticut. And it's one of the ones that came in for Executive Order 7S, which is talking about options that the town would have, or most, I should say, all towns in the State of Connecticut. In your packet, you notice that Executive Order 7S has Section 6, which allows for either or multiple options here, which is either suspension or modification of the tax deadlines or collection efforts. There's two options. One is option A, which is a deferment program for 90 days for tax due. The other option is option B, which is a low interest rate program. And there's a calculator and how the low interest would run. If you've been a chance to read through the process, the whole packet, basically, what we're looking at is options for the taxpayers. The reason why we definitely had to have the meeting tonight to bring this forward is because office and policy management needs to know our answer as to which way we may go with this. They need it by the 25th. So we had to have the meeting tonight in order to process that, to give that to them.
Are we looking to just to do the deferment program?
I, and looking at the whole process, I would simplify it by a deferment program and gives you an opportunity for 90 days. The other one with the low interest rate, I did talk to Karen about that, our tax collector. And it is a very difficult program to calculate out with the interest per month, per year, and then the due dates on top of that for the 90-day window. You also have to consider the fact that if you do that, you're also putting them in a position where anybody who applies for it would then have to put the application in. And we would, we would basically be working as similar to a bank. We'd have to go out and verify all of their finances, make sure that they all follow the rules.
That's for the low interest part of it.
For the low interest part of it.
As far as the deterrent, the deferment.
Right.
It's, it's just a matter of that.
It's, it's just a matter of that. And then they have to pay the interest only as a back for the 90 days. But other than that, they're, it's 90 days before they have to pay, before there's any other penalty. They still have to put an application in, so we know who they are and what the process would be. You'll see that in part of the packet.
Oh, will you advertise for that, Kevin?
We'd have to go online to put that out there as part of the function in the, in the town.
Would you only advertise online though?
Okay, so I'm getting it from Karen that there's no application need. We don't need an application. That as long as they're going through Karen to do that, I think we're fine. So advertising, absolutely. We'd have to put an advertisement into the turnpike buyer. We'd put an advertisement or we'd put an information out there on the, on the town tax collector's office for their section of the town website. We also put the information on the front page, so it's easy to see, so that they'd be able to access it.
Could you also put a slip of paper in their tax bill? Explaining it, giving the information?
Again, I'm not, I could have to defer that to Karen. Karen, yeah, it'll be on their bill. It would be on their bill.
Okay, so they would know that way too.
Yep.
I had another question about that too, was would there be a deadline? Oh, they wouldn't need an application, right? But would there be a deadline for them to
I think.
Submit that they, that they want it?
There's no deadline for it. I think we're still looking for July 1st, aren't we?
I believe I read July 1st.
Yeah, July 1.
So, so they could come to you August and say, can I get a deferment?
I think it has to be in by July 1, saying that they.
There's a deadline.
Right, but there's no application, but they have to at least.
No, no, but there's a deadline that they have to submit, that they have to say they want it. The deferment.
In the paperwork that I see, it's, I think this says July 1.
In, in the paperwork we were given, the, the, yes, the deferment goes from March 10th to July 1. That only the taxes from March 10th to July 1 can be deferred for 90 days. That's all that was. There's no deadline as far as a resident coming and saying, I want this deferment.
Right, but this is, this is for the entire town. The entire town has access to get the deferment.
Yes. I, I understand that, but because it's not written here as to a deadline, they could come to you in August, September, can I get a deferment for 90 days?
How about that?
Unless you set a deadline, you know, specifically July 1st is the last day you can say, I would like this deferment.
Well, I was able now to get Karen up on, Karen, you there? Karen? All right, so I have Karen's mic on, but I don't hear Karen.
I wonder if she has a microphone. She could type in chat, Karen.
She, she has been. There's no application needed. It's going to be for the whole town, not an individual. So anybody within that 90-day period would be able to get a deferment.
It says here, deferment program applications and any required documentation or related information must be submitted to the municipality, no later than July 1st, 2020, in any manner the municipality, municipality specifies, which may be in person, by mail, in, or electronically.
That's, that's what I was reading through there, but.
That's on page eight, Kevin, from OPM.
Thank you.
So Karen is writing here, only for picking and choosing. We're doing the whole town. So basically, it's an extension. If someone comes in September 1st, no interest. The interest starts at October 2nd.
Oh, okay. So do we even need to do this then?
I, I think we still should have to adopt it because they, they have to know which way we're going with the deferment or.
Okay, yeah, right. And you want it just as the deferment?
I would believe that's the easiest way to go. Karen and I already spoke about it, and then we have to adopt this. We have our choice of what you want to do, but Karen was basically mainly saying that the low interest rate program was very difficult to calculate and work, so.
Right.
But it's going to be, if you're doing it by individuals that come to the town, they have to, each one has to fill out an application. We're going to do it generically through the entire town, so it's a deferment program for the entire town. So there's, there's a resolution for this. If you'd like, I can read through it really quick. But basically, it's stating that because the governor has, the State of Connecticut has issued an Executive Order 7S in response to the COVID pandemic, the amend, amended this April 9th. They amended this one on April 9th, 2020 by Executive Order 7W. That Section 6 of Executive Order 7S, as amended by the Executive Order 7W, Section 1, provides the Town of Plainfield to participate in a deferment program in order to, for taxpayers and ratepayers relief of payment due to, due or on after April 1st through July 20th. And that we are actually involved for, oh boy, this is a long.
Does that also include, Kevin, the suspension of the tax sales? Are you including that in it?
The tax sales, this is, I don't believe we're actually adding that in there. This is just for.
Deferment.
Deferments.
Okay, because on your agenda, you have the suspension and modification. So just because that's part of the executive order, is the suspension of the tax sales?
Hereby grants to taxpayers, businesses, nonprofits, residency, deferment 90 days on payments of any taxes on real property, personal property, motor vehicle, municipal water, sewer, and electric rates charging on assessments for such tax rates charged and/or assessments that become due or payable on any such date. And we don't have a tax sale date yet, so it wouldn't be included at this time?
It wouldn't be, so this is just the resolution then for the deferment?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to act on the Executive Order 7S in regards to the deferment program for the whole Town of Plainfield.
Can we make a small amendment to that, Kathy? It says under the Executive Order 7S and 7W.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
7S and 7W.
Motion's made.
No, second.
Second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item up on the agenda is overview to approve and just to publish the proposed 2021 annual budget. We're looking for public input on this. I started to put it up on the town website and realized that we also have something else that we have to do, which is, it's not just publishing the eight pager, which we usually put out there. We need to also put this out as a, I think you have it as a one pager in the, what would be going into the, the actual budget. Let me see if I can find that upon my screen. I know I had it a minute ago. There we go. So let's see if I can do a share with that. And I'm going to share a screen with. This might be it. Yes. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. There have been a few changes, modifications. We're still trying to trim a few things out. But if you'll notice, that's comparative to the 19 and 20, the new one is proposed as 2021. And if I scroll, oops, scroll down. Um, that's what we're looking for. Total expenditures was 48, 527, 552. And there's the breakdown that's inside of every area for the town and for the Board of Education. I think the one you have in your hand that I put in your packet, it might be a little bit off on the bottom number. But that's what we'll be publishing to the public on, put that out into the turnpike buyer.
Don't have that in my packet.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to put everything together. Here's, so you do have, though, you have the eight pager proposed.
I do have the eight page, yes, but I don't have a single page.
All right, I can send you that in an email afterwards. Yep, it is. Also, if you notice in the eight pager, it is a zero mil proposal. I had to make another modification, so I can put the appropriate things in there. And I talked to our finance chairperson about this. Whereas we're still in contract negotiations with unions right now. And that would be the town hall and the town supervisors. So pretty much everybody you see in this whole list has a zero for a salary increase, except for highway and police. So what I could do here, if I still have it up on my documents. See if I can get that back to share. Okay, so the rest of this. That's the zero mil increase that we were talking about with the mil rate, 28.33. And you'll see page by page. Again, this is going to be online. This will also be printed copies. I'll try to get this out to different establishments, so leave it on the counters as best we can. It's difficult as, as we're trying to walk through all of this, trying to get the public access to the information. But we'll try to do this, we can with it. You'll notice each department really minimizes a lot of, you know, what we're trying to put forward. And by the way, I put Tom Sinkowitz on speaker, so Tom's here as well.
Yep.
We've gone through a lot of these departments. By departments, on Wednesday, the Board of Finance will be meeting. I put together a PowerPoint for them with, I'll give you the example, in the assessors department. We have, in the assessors department, the idea would be that we'll show them what the changes were. The idea would be that we'll show them what the changes were. And we will explain what each one of the changes are in a document just below the page by page. So assessors, tax collector, so on and so forth. And then, then there'll be an overview of the, the whole, the whole budget itself at the end. So if there's any questions by the board of finance members, but you have the packet in your hand. Is I just wanted to know if there were any initial questions or concerns? I can probably back out of that. Did I share the screen properly or did you guys have the packet? You have the packet in front of you, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Were there any initial questions on what we've done so far with that?
Question on page two.
Page two. Yes.
I believe it's probably the collection rate at the top, 98%.
Yeah, we, we're trying to figure out what will be appropriate collection rate. Sometimes we've gone 98.5. I know that there's a couple of members of the board of finance want to have it even higher, but we don't anticipate that to be a, a real number. We think that more than likely we're looking at 98. You know.
I was, I was going by the last one that you gave me. It was 90, 97.5, so.
Yeah, we think we can do, we can do 98. We'll see.
And also there were some. Well, on this one, there increased the selectmen first.
Yeah, there's a new one out that shows you zeros.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought you had said that, so.
Yep, and there's another page which I know has a, we do on page six where it says town contributions. Now that you'll, you'll see two things, it'll say sailors and soldiers salary. It'll also be Memorial Day, but I put in there a project pin for a thousand.
Oh, that'll be new.
Yeah, it should have been there, but she didn't put it in unfortunately, so. Forgot to. We'll, we'll have that fixed before we put it out.
Okay, on page seven.
Okay.
I just had a question on the E chip contribution access cost pension reduction.
Yes, that's for the board of, board of education.
Okay.
Yep.
I, well, I just see it in 2021 proposed a reduction of 100,000, 100,000, 100,000.
Yep, I'll explain each one if you like.
Okay, I, well, you go to the change and there's nothing. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's, these are fixes. I got them fixed up for you, so I'll send it out to you guys before you see the final product. But there is an E chip contribution which we made so that the, it goes towards the, that's a collective group of, for insurance. So at this point, they're, they want to pay it now so we can go towards, they said they're going to pay it, so it would be 100,000 in the green for that. We're also looking for, notice the pension reduction is 100,000. Initially, they were going to put in 100,000. We need to get to a certain rate. We have to keep a certain level. We really should be, by the actuaries telling us, we need to get to a certain level. It's usually about 1.2 million. So at this point, the board of education putting their budget together already didn't have access to put that 800,000 on top of what they already have in their budget. So for this year, I am proposing that you'll see in the same page seven. I broke it out so that it says school pension contribution really is $800,000. That'll keep us in line with the actuaries, making them happy. Um, we do have some retirements coming up. We know that. So we want to make sure we're not behind on making those payments. So that's why that's there. You'll also notice a couple of pages before that. There is. Apologize, one second. Page number five, it says insurance and benefits. Insurance and benefits, the drop was it used to be the town pension for town and board of education.
Yeah.
dropped, so eventually it'll say just town. But for this year, it says town and board of ed, but it's really just the town size is going to be $450,000.
Yeah.
To put in pension line item.
The only other change I saw that, well, there was a couple, but that's all right. It's in the police.
Page number four.
Four.
Yes.
It's under police salaries.
Yes.
That was a new change, 20,000 drop. Just curious.
Yep. There, the anticipation is that there's three staff short. And knowing that the state of Connecticut right now is in a shutdown, even if they were to get an applicant to come in, they wouldn't be able to put him into the program through the state. So he anticipates that that will save us some money because by the time they actually start back up, they haven't paid salary on three officers. So they anticipate money savings there.
Okay. So I had more. You're just working on a budget. You're going into capital improvements?
Well, we, we can, we can actually table this if you want. We can talk about this at the next meeting. So we can actually put it forward to the public. If that's okay with you or whatever your pleasure would be.
I mean, that's fine with me.
Okay. Is that okay with you Kathy? Will table? Is Kathy there still?
No, we lost her again.
Yeah, we lost her again. Okay.
So tonight, tonight you just want to move your, your budget ahead to the board of finance and into the public to.
To public.
Let me see.
We don't have to take action on it, but we would like to bring it over to the board of finance.
So what are you looking to table you?
Well, I can have the corrected copy with the zero, zero increases for salary and then add that $100,000. I'm sorry, add the $1,000 back into project PIN, so we'll calculate the numbers correct. If you want to do that with an amendment and make a motion to move it forward to the board of finance, that's fine.
Instead of waiting for another meeting, when's the next meeting? Next week or?
Next week, but we want to, we want to get this to the board of finance so that we can start going forward.
Okay.
And by the way, the board of finance may have some changes for us between now and next meeting, so. But we want to be able to present this to the board.
Okay. So you're just, you're looking for a motion to approve this and move it forward to the board of finance the way it's, or, or. Do you, you want it amended?
With.
With changes before it's moved on to the board of finance?
Yep, but you can put that in your motion.
Okay, so that's, I'll make a motion to move the proposed town budget forward with the changes yet to come.
That were mentioned already.
Yeah, right.
All right. I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So Tom, you'll be getting your final numbers for your meeting.
Yep.
Okay. We can talk briefly about the capital, proposed capital plan.
Hey, I just wrote, I just jotted some questions down, that's all.
Okay. Yeah, there, if you'll notice that there's a few things that we're, again. We're trying to trim it down to as minimal as possible to bring it forth to the public so that it's, you know, for us, it's, it's really what it is. I can, I can go through each one real quick. The, there's an HVAC system that's needed in the town clerk's office for the basement vault and upstairs vaults. There's two separate ones. There's 6,000. We're going to. We can get grants.
Yes, that was one of my questions, if that had gotten done or not.
Yep. Still got to work on grants to get those, so we can get that through the year, I believe. Same thing for the Conex boxes for eviction storage. They're sealed boxes, so when people bring in their properties, they can put it into the boxes. Total of 5,000. We may be able to move that out. I think that's really important at this point. You notice police station has requests for the Dodge Cruisers, but that's in our budget. So those are taken care of in there, the 64,000. Um, we also have the next item down, which is the planning department has the 15,000 for the four wheel drive used vehicle.
25.
Well, it's 15. It's going to be used.
Okay, so that's, that's a change then.
Well, it's in the, it's in the budget as 15, so you may have the old budget in your hand, but it's 15 for used.
Let me change it.
Yep. Okay, I'll get you another copy tomorrow.
Proposed capital plan.
Right.
Yeah.
Recreation was requesting that they change over carpet to vinyl for the senior center flooring. That's $9,000. Again, we're looking for grants to do that instead. That's it for the town.
Yeah.
Um. I really tried to minimize what we had here. We were very, very fortunate this year, and I think I've spoken to Tom about this. We had a requirement by the state of Connecticut. We've had one for a long time with the environmental services for the highway department. They have a salt shed up there. It leaches salt into the wetlands and that's a big violation. So what we were able to do was work with Martin Broji, who's been working with the town for years on that and came up with some solutions as to how we could fix it. And we use town aid road money to, in order to incorporate a fix. So the town aid road will help, help us to buy a salt shed and put it up. Would also put us requirement to do a fence line area so people can't keep on throwing garbage over from the, from the cemetery. And also the issue of the as-built paperwork so that it can be promoted to the, to the state of Connecticut to complete the project. That money was left over from town aid road as was. You'll notice in your five-year capital plan that there was a request for, for the the previous years for a new tractor, a sick alarm mower. Well, that was something that we were able to find with the town aid road money and we're able to appropriate already this year. So that's going to save us from having anything else in that five-year capital. I'm trying to make it so that in the five-year capital that you see, we can rotate things. Like in other words, you shouldn't have to have a, a new truck for the highway department every year. You got to space them out. So that's, that's the plan. I got to put that all together so that next year it looks much neater than what it has right here. And that was what I like to do with that. But that's what the five-year capital plan on our side is. I know we don't have anybody here to speak from the board of education, probably Wednesday night to speak on the five-year capital, even board of ed requests. And water pollution control is the other one. Water pollution control authority has a list of items that need to be worked on. I'm still working on that budget right now. Um, well, I'm, I should say Becky's working on that budget right now with, with Kelly and we'll, we're going to sit down after it's all completed and go through step by step and be sure it's. So that's the proposed five-year capital. We're working on completing it so that we can get put it out as well to the board of finance. So far so good?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's okay.
I think included in your packets were also the issue of the five-year capital plan by each department.
Yep.
The tough part about the coronavirus has caused this issue to occur where we're sitting here on, on our computers, talking to each other. It makes it very difficult for the department heads to sit down and meet with the board of finance. So they do have the, the written documentation and material to help them out. So you can see that there's a five-year plan, five-year capital plan by each department. There's also some documentation from the town talking about what it needs. So it's all included in your packet. And then of course, in your package should be also the one year, the cost summaries and the revenue summaries from the board of education that's in there as well. So that's what the packet that I gave to the members of the board of finance. And they're going to review those. I can tell you very quickly that we were working on the, if I can back up one step here. All right, so let's see if I can get there. Screen. So what I did was I put together a slideshow for the board of finance, whether we get to sit down. You can see this right now?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah.
So this is going to be the slideshow presentation to the board of finance. And like I said, we're going, but department by department is going to show you what the changes were and descriptions down below of what's happening. So as an example, we moved out to the tech, tech services, moved it over to what it really would be, which is talking about the administrative services of like when Becky's doing the minutes of the meeting. So we put that out to the, to the very bottom. You'll see that in your packet. It was moved $2,500 down into the boards and commissions. So we moved it over there. Other than that, there's a few other change, very few other changes that are here. And it's like that for every department. Finance, they're talking about what they had to do for changes. The audits costing us more this year. They're asked, the auditing companies asking us for more items. So we're anticipating the same thing next year, but to a minimal degree. And so on and so forth. Every department gave me a sit-down time with them. I documented what they had with Kelly. We walked through and made our, you know, written documents to what's happening so that everybody can see it. So that's, that's basically what, what I did to make it easier for the board of finance, along with the printed packet that you have talking about, you know, from their own perspective of what they'd like to see for a five-year capital. So I hope that helps when we sit down with the board of finance on Wednesday and go through all of those items.
Yeah, definitely will.
Okay. So that is what the presentation will be for the budget. Hopefully if there's any other changes that'll happen after Wednesday, we can meet on Monday for our regular select meeting, make the changes, put them out to the public as the final request and.
I have some questions if you want them.
Sure.
In the rec department.
Yeah.
Budget. The department head goes from 33,000 to 47.
Good catch.
Huh?
Very good catch. What you'll see in that budget, if you run through it already, you'll notice that there's two changes. One is, well, a couple. There's a couple. You'll, you'll notice though that the request for on page number five, let's start on page five.
Of the budget.
Yep, of the regular budget. Page five says there's a salary for a grant writer. I like to have a economic developer slash grant writer position because we can get so much out of a grant writer to help us to write for the things we just mentioned. Um, there's lots more. I have, I have three pages of, of requests for grants. I'd like to apply for. So it helps us in our budget if we can offset by purchasing items or getting things that actually are in our five-year capital. So that's that one. You said recreation on the same page. Recreation goes from a part-time to a full-time salary. I'd like to be able to put that at full-time. I'd like to put a lot more activities going in there.
Is that what it's going to be, 47?
Uh, page five says 55,000.
55.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
On her, on hers is 47. That's why I was wondering what she was.
No, it's, it's our thing of 55. I'm looking at the numbers comparative to other towns around us. And what we could do is 55.
Yeah, okay. Watch it out. So that was the question there. On the next page of her budget. She has. Come on, where is it? Senior meals on wheels.
Yep.
Now, I go, I go to, you have Thames Valley Council for Community Action in here. They were looking for 13,000.
That's what, that's what we're doing, 13,000.
Okay, so it won't be the 5200.
No.
Okay.
I mean, she's over, she's already applying for other things to help the senior van to offset costs.
Yeah.
So if those things come in, that's fantastic. It helps, it helps it all together.
Okay. On the next page of her budget, summer tent rental, and this says purchase two tents for shade for Shepherd Hill School. Are these rented or are they going to be purchased? It's 22.
On the next page?
This on, yeah, on her budget.
I didn't have that included in the budget, so I'm not, and that's not, that's something we're going to be looking at right now.
Okay, well, you put it in my package, so.
I know, but.
I went through it.
I know, there's some, some of the things that I didn't go forward with.
Okay, it's just, you know, things, things we could look at, I guess. It's, it's just like at the bottom here. You got transportation, summer trips from the rec center to the pool. $1,800 for that. Couldn't they just meet at the pool instead of going to the rec center and being bused to the pool?
Yep, it was, wasn't something that I included in our budget.
Okay, all right.
Actually, I don't, I don't mind it when people come up with ideas and want to do different things. It's fine. It's just a matter of what we can afford and what we can do.
Yeah, right, right. Um. Um, I think the only other thing on on that stuff was the bulky waste. The amendment.
The the bulky waste is contractual, and that's what it is at this point.
Yeah, I did. I did some numbers this morning, though. At the rate they're increasing from 17 to 18, all the way through 20 to 21. Okay. At the rate they're increasing, by the year 3031, we're going to be paying over half a million dollars. Just putting it out there because it's going up that much per year. That, yeah.
Well, we'll talk about it the next negotiations.
Good. Good.
There's there's other options, and I think we should look at them later on.
I think so.
But right now, we're just trying to present the budget as is with what we have for contracts.
That's all the questions I had then.
Okay. Other than that, if we want to move on then to the last item on our agenda that we've had, item seven. All right, there is a what they call a budget implementer. Item seven talks about 2% of the Plainfield Board of Education funds are the leftover from annual budget set by the Board of Finance. This should be an action item that we have here. We are supposed to approve from Board of Selectmen's position. It's okay to do. So just so you know that there is a implementer public act called 19-117. That is allowing you to for a state budget by end of 2021 that there's unexpended school budget funds. An act increases the amount of unexpended educational funds that a town could deposit into a non-lapsing account at the end of each fiscal year 2% of the total budget appropriation for education. The act also requires any expenditure of funds from this account be authorized by the local Board of Education of the town and be for educational purposes only. So this is something that we we just have to approve as selectmen saying it's okay for them to appropriate and move forward with that of those monies. I think some of the discussion on two, I'm sorry, Wednesday is going to be well, where are we right now with the unexpended monies? So how do we know how much is left over the end of the year? And of that, there's 2% that can roll forward so that we're okay with them rolling it forward into the budget.
My question on that? It says non-lapsing account. It goes into a non-lapsing account.
So it stays active. And then they can vote to roll that into their budget. Because it's going to be used for educational purposes.
Well, it rolls into it says it could be it could deposit into a non-lapsing account. Okay, that means to me, say they deposit 100,000 into a non-lapsing account this year because it was 2% left over. If they don't use that next year, 2021, does it just keep lapsing over? Can they add to that account every year, the 2% if they don't use it?
The way that the bill reads, it's supposed to be expended during the year.
Okay, that's what I was asking. So they could they can roll it over just into 2021.
And.
If it doesn't get expended, it goes back into the general fund. Or more than likely, it'll get expended, but.
More than likely.
Yeah. Okay.
That'll be a question for Wednesday with Tom. Okay. But if we could move forward with this now, we can at least get to the finance. Let them ask the questions of the Board of Education with with Kenda Petro and then move forward with that. So.
Just wanted to get the questions out.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the public act 19 117.
To move forward to the.
For Finance.
Yep. Motion's made. I will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That is what we have for agenda items. I apologize to the listening crowd. Again, this is something new. We're working through all of our issues here. It's something that each board and commission is going to have to do. So we'll get through it. It's just a matter of making sure that I have my issue is I'm trying to, again, run a meeting and I'm watching my participant list and any messages that might come through. So I can't do all of those things while trying to focus on what's going on with the board. So normally, what we'll have is I'll give an example for the Board of Finance when you're coming up, Tom.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, I'll help you out. I'll administer the the maintenance of the your meeting by way of if anybody has a comment or a concern, I can relay that to you by saying you have a question from someone from the audience.
Yeah, that'll be helpful.
Okay, and then I'll be watching who's coming in and who's coming out. I'll make sure they're on mute.
Yeah, because the way I had presented the agenda is I had mentioned to people that if they had if they reviewed the agenda and they had input, they had questions or concerns to contact me like up until the meeting. But during the meeting, I mean, with needing to focus on motions and all the other things in the agenda, I wasn't 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 quite on the same page with being able to coordinate both the agenda, the motions, and also keeping up with that. So it's helpful to have somebody else doing that.
Right. So for those people who are concerned about what's going on with any of the boards or commissions, if you want to initially start by sending an email over to me initially at k cunningham selectman at plainfieldct.org or you can call into the town hall at 8602303001. We'll try to answer your questions, whatever it might be concerning, whether it's the the budget, whether it's for the Board of Finance. You Tom has his own email and it's on the if you go to the agenda, his email is actually in the the agenda itself. We'll get one of those for every single board and commission so that you can talk to the chair prior to the meeting and ask questions that could be brought up during the meeting. So it'd be part of the public comment section, I believe, so we can move forward with that. Like I said, it is very difficult to try to do the meeting, monitor and answer questions. So it it'll work eventually. We'll get there. And hopefully, it won't be using this too much longer, but it is for now. All right, with that, uh, we do have some correspondence in the back. If you note there was correspondence. One was from John Paul Govan. He's talking about different claims against against the town. If it's all right with you, I'm going to just answer Mr. Govan back individually to express our concerns is coming from from coming from the town. But again, it was correspondence. He asked me to share that with both of you. And then the other question came back from we were looking to add someone else to a committee and a board and committee. And I had forgotten that this person member was a chair of a previous charter revision commission. So he's served the town before. So just so you know that that person has served the town before. That was the only other correspondence that I had. We don't have anything for open. I don't see any other comments by anybody else listed here. So at this point, I would ask for an entertaining motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second. And we will adjourn at 7:58 PM for the Board of Selectmen meeting. Right, if you want to stay on for a minute for anybody who's interested, we'll go through a quick review. Because guess what we did during the meeting here was we were talking about the item of executive order 7S suspension modification of taxes deadlines collections, just a formality. We'll go through this fairly fairly quickly if you don't mind. It is 7:59. I call this Water Pollution Control Authority meeting to order, a special meeting on March, I'm sorry, April 20. And we will go forward with this. We have a call to order. Kevin Cunningham.
All right, Cathy.
Becky Hewitt.
All right. And I still don't see Kathy back on, so we're going to go to approval of the minutes from March 9, 2020.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I'll second. I'll second that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the item for new business reviewing the action on executive order 7 asks for the suspension modification of tax deadlines and collection efforts. That's the same packet that we saw before. We're just doing it for Water Pollution Control Authority. If they have.
Make a motion that we act on the executive order 7S 7W.
And approve it.
And prove it.
As a deferment.
Yes, for the deferment program.
Okay. Have that Becky?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion's been made. I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There is no other. We can move into motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.